It's the regular session, eleven fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. Going to call for a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Want to do the pledge of allegiance? All right, first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. We got one addition to this. This thing came in after the agenda was printed Friday. Came in Friday, I reckon, about dinnertime. About the hospital board appointment. We need to add that. Is there anything, any other additions? If not, we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second.
All in favor, huh? All right, motion secured. Approval at a minute. Everybody read over that?
Yes.
Look like it's an order. And we need a motion to approve.
I approve. I second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, motion secured. Financials, the accounts payable. Any questions on that?
No.
You want to have a motion to approve?
I second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, motion secured. Financial reports?
Break and bolster to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, the motion's carried. All right, on appearance, we got Carol J. Williams, the Animal Rescue Alliance. Okay. You, uh, you want to explain? We got a request for a tax abatement on the building from the other lady.
That would be the owner of the building.
Do I?
That would be the owner of the building.
Yeah. You want to explain? We, we want you to, I think, and y'all can ask questions, whatever, whatever you want to. Your scope of your operation, how, how you going to operate and what? Because we got a contract also that you had left here for the county.
Yes, sir.
You want to explain that, you know?
Certainly. Well, thank you for inviting me to come. I'm sorry that you all were not able to come to our sneak peek event. We had a private event for law enforcement and for city councils and commissioners for Miller County and Seminole. And that hopefully would have answered a lot of the questions, but I'd be happy to explain more about what we're doing. We opened in September. We're a nonprofit five oh one C three. We have a, a board that governs us. We right now have four employees that are working for us. They, um, basically, our mission when we first started was to set as a priority to take animals from law enforcement personnel for both counties because there was not an option at that point for law enforcement when they picked up stray animals. It took a while for Donaldsville, City of Donaldsville returned their contract and Seminole County did as well. I sent one to Iron City. We, I, I assume they're not returning theirs. City of Cockwood, I'm assuming they're not returning theirs as well. And so we were waiting to see what you all were going to do. So in the meantime, we have been taking animals in from owner surrenders. We have quite a waiting list at this point. Our capacity is for about twenty dogs and about the same number of cats. And we are absolutely maxed out at this point. We've been sending some of our animals out to transport to other rescues around the country. We have sent animals as far as Maine, California. We've created quite, quite a, a social media presence and we've had several adoptions out of the area from St. Augustine, a couple from Atlanta, one from Indiana. There's a lady coming in the next two weeks from Pennsylvania. So our, our mission is to provide an option for each county for unwanted animals because at this point, I think it's, it's pretty well known that in Miller County, there isn't an option. When dogs are picked up, cats are ignored. But when dogs are picked up, there really is not a viable option for them. And so we would like to provide you with that option. Seminole County took the stance that they would like to use us for animals that first are not owned by somebody and second seem like they're adoptable. So they let us know that they're not going to be using us every time for every animal that's picked up, and that's fine. And so we're hoping that you all would take that same position, that we don't have to be, you know, the only option for you all, but at least we are an option, which is more than what has been present in Miller County up to this point. As far as Angela Hagan and her dealings with you for, for her tax issues, what, what her request was. She's our landlady. She's the owner of the property. And as far as that goes, I, I don't know if I can speak for her, whatever your issues are with Angela, but I know that she-
There ain't, there ain't any issues. We, um, I don't say under advisement, but anyway, I, I, I don't think the tax assessor office felt like it was, they could grant a tax abatement because-
Okay, that honestly, that doesn't concern our company, so that's between you and Angela.
Are y'all, are y'all renting?
We are.
The building from her?
She's our landlady.
See, that's, that's kind of the issue right there. She, she made profit or if she's going on it, she's, is getting paid for if she's making payments or whatever. But see, she's getting something out of it.
I think you'd have to address that to her. I, I can tell you that with what she put into buying the property, having the building completely gutted down to the studs and redone for us, she has in probably just under a million dollars. And, you know, what she's getting from us in rent is basically not very much. She's doing it because she wanted to see a facility in this county.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that, that's your decision to give her a break or not, but I, I think it's commendable that, you know, I tried for three years to get-
These questions had to be asked.
I understand.
Stuff like that.
But I'd like to just say for the record that I, I tried for three years to get a facility in either county set up for animals. And it, it wasn't going to happen. And this is a private citizen that stepped up and put her own funds up for this.
All right, um, if somebody drops an animal off, is there any fees for them dropping?
If we take an owner surrender off the list, we ask for a donation of any amount. And that's what's been happening. We have people that can't afford to give very much at all, and we have others that feel like they want to provide some money for the care of that animal. But as far as, if you're asking, are we making money on it? Um, no, we're not. We're not funded by Miller or Seminole County, and we're existing right now solely on private donations. We qualify for an awful lot of grants, but every one of them wants to see our stats from the previous year. So for the first year, we're not getting anything.
In the contract here, it states that a fee of one hundred dollars will be applied and billed to the delivering entity. In the contract here, it said for every animal brought to the A R A facility during business hour, a fee of one hundred dollars will be applied and billed to the delivering entity.
Yes. That would be if it's Miller County sheriff, that would be a hundred dollars. And I, I'd like to just clarify any concerns you might have about that. When we take a dog in, two of our employees also work at Cockwood Animal Hospital and are able to perform a pretty extensive medical intake exam. At that point, the animal is given dewarmer, they're checked for heartworm, using a heartworm test. They're giving a Boratella vaccine, a rabies vaccine, any kind of bathing, flea treatment, anything that needs to be done. That, that's if the animal's healthy. If there's a, an obvious medical issue, then we address that as well. When they go to transport, there's a fee that we're paying to have the animal transported. If they're not going to be transported and they're held at our facility for an adoption, they have to be spayed or neutered and microchipped. So a hundred dollars, I, I, there's no bet that I know of that you can get all those services for a hundred dollars. On top of taking care of the animal, feeding them, we're paying our staff to do sanitation. A hundred dollars is a heck of a, a deal.
All right, something else you got in the contract here about if you took an animal in and it, it, it wasn't, it stayed longer than a week?
That's an animal that's taken in as part of a legal investigation. So take the example of the dog fighting instance that happened in Seminole County.
Right. All right. Any, any other animal that was dropped off over there by law enforcement? What's, what's the deal with that if it stays longer than a week?
It doesn't, that doesn't apply. If today-
So you got the initial fees for dropping the animal off? Huh?
That's it.
And that's?
Yes.
It don't ma, don't matter how long it stays?
No. That clause only applies to legal investigations where, like I say, the dog fighting. Because we absolutely did not want to be in the situation where we have ten or twenty dogs in horrendous condition with terrible dispositions left with us indefinitely until their case went to court. We, we, we just didn't want to be in that circumstance, and that clause in the contract is to prevent that.
Y'all got any more questions?
No, I have nothing.
All right. I think what we're going to do is put this, we're going to table it to the next meeting about the tax abatement. I mean, you kind of told us, if y'all haven't got any more questions, you kind of told us what the, how your operation's going to run and all that right there.
I would also like to invite you to come out and see our facility. It'll give you a better idea of exactly what we do. We're open Wednesday through Saturday to the public from ten to four.
All right, we, we got the tax assessor here. Was there anything you, we want to?
Are you addressing the tax abatement?
Yeah.
On, on behalf of board of assessors, we reviewed it and, or they reviewed it and they denied it. Simple fact of the reason they denied it is the sole ownership of the building. The facility is owned by one individual and operated by a different organization. So if you look at the taxability according to state statute, it applies to the owner and the occupant of the building. Therefore, the owner does not qualify for tax exemption. I urge the board to consider that as the, the state statute. And also, she's a private individual owning that building, and she's asking for exemption on a private piece of property. Even though it's operating a five oh one C three, it's still considered a private property as far as.
Well, the, the private owner just walked in, so feel free, if you have a question for her, Angela Hagan, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know. Anybody have any questions?
I was just explaining why the board of assessors didn't, didn't grant the exemption when it come before them.
All right. Being the fact this, uh, situation like that, and we may, for whatever legal reasons, can't, can't do that. If, uh, to help out, maybe at some point in time, just make a donation towards y'all keeping the facility up, maybe in the, somehow or another. Is that? I mean, it's, it's sort of the same thing, but I mean, we, we may can't grant a tax abatement. I mean, we may, I, I don't know, we didn't plan for it in the budget or anything like that right there, but is that something y'all would consider? Can't do that.
You can't make a donation. The hand of order commission cannot constitute a provision under the statute of law. You may keep a contract of service, but you can't do it in just a gratuitous, uh, donation.
All right, we, did you look at the contract?
No, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
All right, we, uh, y'all got any more question on this? Over to county attorney or anybody? Okay, let, let us, let us see what we can do for this thing. I, they, we may or may can't. I mean, it may, it may wind up like Mr. Mill said, uh, have some kind of contract beyond what we got here. I, I'd like to see the thing run. But, uh, I mean, we're going, we're going to have to follow the guidelines.
We certainly appreciate that because like I pointed out, this is a service we're providing to this county and to Seminole County that has been needed for as long as I've been in this area. And the fact that you have a private citizen that stepped up and took this on her shoulders, I, I think, yeah, whatever you can do, just to show that appreciation, I, I think that would be in line.
All right, if-
Thank you.
Y'all want to revisit this?
Yes, we can table it.
All right. All right, we're going to table this. We'll see if there's something we can do, and we'll try to do it by the next meeting.
We appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Next thing we got is old business, Super B Express. That land purchase over there has been postponed. And that, that, that deal through the building inspector is kind of on hold too. With some of their stuff, they were remodeling down there, so we just going to have to, until they come back and let us know something, we just going to have to table that one. Senior building purchase. The, uh, we met with everybody. There was an option put out there of finding another building for them. There is a building available that the hospital owns, there's a house down there. And hospital's willing to remodel it so it would fit their needs with handicap bathrooms for us one thing and another. Is that something y'all want to continue to look into?
Yeah, we got the seniors' input on that.
Talked to one of them today, and they need to go down there, they wanted to look at the thing. And it couldn't happen today. But the building inspector said that that house would do for what they wanted to do as far as the square footage and stuff like that for the amount. But they need to have a plan in place, and that's been stressed, of, of who are the officers of that? Who's going to head it up and all that? It needs presenting to us. And, uh, I mean, I told that to the one that I talked to today. But, is Claude Newsome, is he the one trying to hit this thing up kind of?
Well, he was, he was other ones, yes.
Claude need to make contact with us to tell us where, where they at with it and, and when he can, can look at the house down there. But it is available. And it, it's, it's big enough to do what they need to do, if that's an option that we still want to go into.
I'll contact him in the morning.
Well, tell him to make contact with Doug. Doug's got a key to the place and set up a time when maybe Doug and, and several of the other ones, and I don't mind going down there if it's where I can with them. So, if you can, make contact with him and, and try to set up a time.
Yeah, I'll get up with it first thing in the morning.
Any more questions on that? The house, the house that's available down there is five oh one Cuthbert Street. It's the one that the hospital had, they had some office space in. And they had about twenty people working in there all the time that they occupied the thing. So, any more questions on that? The fueling station report, did all that look okay? All right, any no question on that, we're gonna go on to the next item. The D O T, the Big Drain Bridge Project, page twenty-three and twenty-six. What did, do we need, need to agree? The Big Drain Bridge Project?
Yes, me and Andy had played that with them through a Zoom call November, first of November. And basically, it really wasn't a D O T in the county, it was the D O T and their different divisions inside the D O T, just going over and reviewing, I think they reviewed six different bridges. And I think our bridge was the only one that didn't have water running through it at the time and I think that's gonna probably push us up to the top of the list. But they have six projects that they're looking at and they actually just looking at the different species of plants and animals that interact with habitat that bridge. So, that's, that's pretty much where they left off. They didn't guarantee anything, didn't tell us when it was gonna be, they just, was just kind of reviewing it with the different departments.
So, there's nothing we need to act on on that?
That, that report in the senior package already been done yet.
All right, the next item is the road closure abandonment resolution. We, laden up here tonight, he's sick. Have y'all got, we got the county attorney here to answer questions on it. Do we need to go on and read this?
The, the resolution is the starting point to begin the process of closing or of a county road. A motion would have to be made to adopt the resolution and pass or not pass. If it does not pass, then that's the end of it. If it does pass, then you would go to noticing all adjoining landowners, publishing papers two weeks before the meeting or public hearing. Have a public hearing at your next board meeting typically before your board meeting and then either finalize closure by motion at the next, at that meeting. But this is only, the, the adoption of this resolution, which is done by motion and voting, is just to start the process, to, to follow the statutory procedure.
I got a question for you. I looked it up on Google, didn't know what even want to call it. I'm not a computer expert, but I know the motory of our Cockwood County, that's one similar situation. All right, there was some people wanting to close the road where they chose not to close it, but their county attorney also said that whenever you do that, you have to have that road appraised for money making and it is offered to the owner of the county.
That's after you close it, not before you close on it. That, that would occur, there's another step at, if you close it, then it revert the adjoining landowner of that road and seek return of that property to the adjoining property. So, then you, you, you either value those, you know, whatever it is of, you know, the property, whether it's forty feet, fifty feet, whatever it is, you have to value that. And then, yes, then you negotiate or work out, you know, if an adjoining landowner wants it back, then that's what he has to pay for. That's after it's abandoned, you don't have to do it before you consider abandoned.
If there's not a deed up there on record and the family had donated the land for that road and the-
There, there is a, there are cases where you can return it to the adjoining landowner without any compensation if it was originally donated. If it was sold and you got, you know, they got the purchaseback. Is that it?
All right.
And where, how much land, this is, if it's a dirt road, unless you've acquired a deeded, meets and bounds, your ownership is not a deed title. It is an ease, a scripted easement of ever how you, what the width of that road you maintain. In other words, some roads are just two grater blades, you know, down one side and down the other and that's, that's what you have. I don't, I haven't seen this road I couldn't dig. Some are nothing but basically one grater, you know, blade width. It just depends on what the use of the road is. But all you have is the width of the used or maintained part of the road and that's a prescriptive easement, it's not deed title unless you require it is. If you require deed, then you may have, very well have a specific amount of land and deed title.
Doug, when y'all went up there and, and looked at their, did, was there a thorough search of, of the record? Is this-
What, what's in that package, what the clerk of court found? There's, there's no flats or anything other than that, that deed, but it covers the whole, the whole part of it.
All right. The irrigation walks across the road?
If it's a county road, that, in my opinion, that got to stop liability. You cannot slow the county road for that purpose. There are two, basically, there's always been a question, if there's an adjoining landowner objection, then you can't, you can't close it, that's not the law. There are basically two criteria. That is if it ceases to serve a substantial public purpose and it can't be done for failure to maintain it. You know, the county just abandons it by not maintaining it, that will not be a valid reason. Or, and I have to always look because this is new, excuse me just a second. It no longer serves a substantial public purpose or is in the best public interest. Now, a lot of counties have moved using that terminology and the courts have hailed that to be valid if they say it's not used enough to, the cost of maintaining that track of road or that road. So, you, you have to show that you're gonna save X number of dollars if you close this by not having to maintain it. Now, these things are in, in the board's discretion, subject to challenge, but it's basically in the board's discretion. But you've got to be able to show that there's no substantial public purpose for the road and that, or, not and, or, that it's been ceased, excuse me, there's no substantial public purpose or ceased to be used by the public to extent it's no longer has any real purpose.
All right, this has been going on for fifteen years or longer. It's done been, it's done been visited, and I ain't got the minutes in front of me at least twice before and it's just been pushed aside to close this road. All right, this is the third time that I know of. Where, where we, where, where are we at with being the fact that it's done been visited twice and this is the third time and nothing's happened if we don't close the road or the irrigation keeps walking across the road?
You gotta, you gotta, you can't, if it's a public road, you've got to. My advice to y'all is to have that irrigation system stopped. Because if it's an open public road and somebody's riding along and that, the landowner's gonna be liable, whoever owns that irrigation system in the county could be liable.
We'll be closing for you.
Whether, whether or not it's been discussed, visited, that's, you know, it's a policy at this point in time that the board would have to address. I mean, it's, it's, just because it may have been brought up and discussed in a prior time does not necessarily make it, you know, that, that in and of itself is not ground.
All right. They, there's already gates on each end that closed off when the irrigation's running. The people done started going around the gates, that's, that's what's happening now.
If, if, if it's been that way for a substantial period of time, that may go to prove one of the conditions of closing, that it hasn't served any public purpose.
Well-
The gates are just closed when irrigation has crossed the road.
That can't be done anymore.
And, and I wanna, I've, I've been seeking to find out who granted them to put the gates in the first place? Why were the gates put there if the road was not put up for closure? To me, if you put gates there, you closed the road. Who gave that authority to them to put the gates there in the first place? The county commissioner?
There was, there was four years I was out of here that I wasn't on the board. That took place somewhere in there. If it may be, may or may not be written in the minutes, I don't know.
I've got roughly a hundred signatures on a petition here saying they don't want that road closed and it was handed to me.
Or is that notarized? Are any of them notarized? Don't that, don't petition, don't they have to be notarized?
There's, there's no mention of having a petition in the, in the statute on closing, so.
But you were saying that you want to prove that the road is utilized. Right there with those petition is letting you know that the road is being used by all those people or majority of those people that signed it. So, the road is being, I went in there, out there and looked at the road myself and I stood, I went from end to end and there's not just tractor tray, uh, tracks, there's different vehicle tracks that's going through there. So, the road is being used.
You got U P S, you got Perdix, you got all kinds of people that are going to church over there to use it. And if you close the bridge or shut down Bellevue Road, that's the last road before you get to the bridge to make a detour off of to go to ninety-one.
I have a question. Great. Nice question. You know, I'm sixty-one years old and I always have to do that. I went around the gates and I never could understand how to do-
So, you, you went around the gates?
I have went around the gates. Ain't gonna continue to go around the gates because you can't close a public road without having a vision of it. You can't, you can't, oh, you can't close a public road for a farmer to run his irrigation around for it feasible for him to make a better progress.
Well, you can't put gates on a public road, period.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Leroy on that.
We've been riding that road ever since I've been a boy.
Yes.
And, and, and I come to it quite often.
That road is used also substantially for landfill traffic coming from Avenue Road, Johnny Freeman Road. That whole area uses that road to access a landfill.
And again, if it floods, how is Mr. Earl gonna get out?
That's right, I can't get out.
How can he do out?
Anytime when Earl can't get out from his house to the Bellevue Road, he can't pass, the other end of the road's underwater on both ends.
Yes, I can. The reason I couldn't before is because they can just work those ditches on the other end of the road.
So, what proof needs to be, if we have to show proof, if the petition doesn't show that the road is being used, what needs to be shown to show that it is being used?
Those are the two criteria. I mean, if, if the weight of whatever you contend is not for my, is not my decision to be made. My job is to make sure that the board follows the right procedures.
So, I guess according to you, being the county attorney, you're telling us that an irrigation isn't a reason to close the road and what was other?
Well, irrigation cannot, let me put it this way. I'm not saying irrigation not to be closed. What I'm saying is if you keep it open or if it is a county road, you cannot close it to let irrigation crawl.
Okay.
I'm talking about just temporarily.
Yes, I guess what the question is, what deems necessities to close a road?
Cost of maintaining is one of the criteria and no substantial public purposes of that.
And it is for Perdix, someone's discussing, or churches.
And it's been ceased to be used by the public.
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't weigh that up.
Yes, sir, I totally understand.
Well, it's not right to close a road for one person, no offense, Memphis Brown. It's not right, I don't care who you are, to close a road for one person when the rest of the county, you know, people use it. It's just not right, it don't look good, it just ain't right.
It ain't a matter of look, this, that's things a liability and it's a hazard.
Do you have an irrigation system running across it? You know, the county don't own no irrigation system.
They, they can't shorten irrigation?
The man made a request to close the road. That's where we at with it. Now, I, I, it's gonna come down to a vote. I'm not gonna recommend to read this-
I don't care if people going through there, I just want to let them know it's a proper road and, you know, be careful. I never had attention trouble stopping traffic.
That's what it's going down to. Could we close Bellevue then because I want to put a sprinkler system out there on it? It's the same point.
I can one man close their road. Nobody, the road is on my account.
One thing you need to take into consideration, this ain't the only road, there's two other roads that you can go to get, nobody lives on this road.
Avenue.
Yeah, I'll live on that road.
Nobody lives beyond, we're not closing, we're not closing the whole road, we're closing it in the field park.
But that's the part that everybody uses, the field park to get to ninety-one, uh, from Avenue and Bellevue, that side of the county. That's right, dude, it's cool. You got some Coop residents that live there, they go to Coop's Union Church, they use that there every Sunday.
That's right. They're using that road forever. I can't understand why anybody thought that the road was not being used, well, it's been being used. Just being honest with you, I mean, it's never been good.
Well, if y'all, y'all got any more questions for the county attorney? About, about this, anybody?
My, my questions have been answered.
We're not gonna vote on it tonight, we're not, I'm not going, Mr. County Attorney advised me to read the resolution. Do I need to read this and then table it for adoption?
You don't necessarily have to read a resolution. Only thing I, at least my procedures have been is that you would read a local, so, a petition to change a local order, it's not an order, it's just simply, this is a motion in resolution form, more clearly stated following the statute. You don't necessarily have to read it, you can, but you don't have to.
We, we ain't got the full board here, you gonna, you gonna-
But I saw some.
Go ahead.
Is it fair to block me and my family in?
You're not landlocked, Earl.
Yeah, I am.
No, you're not.
If I close that road, I will be landlocked, can't get to my home deer and rainy weather because it floods that end.
Let me, we need to make a motion whether to proceed forward with this resolution or, you need to come to a vote?
It's up to the board, I, you know, it's up to the board whether or not you can just not take any action on it. You can vote it up or down, it's just up to the board, you know? I was asked to assist the administrator getting it properly before the board and the proper format.
Well, I think it should be voted on whether you're gonna go forward with it or not.
Listen, a board member here, you get, you getting a tie vote. Well, you're gonna have to re, if it gets to a tie vote, it's gonna be, that's gonna have to be revisited.
I'm gonna say this and Mr. Ronnie, you know this and I'm saying this with all respect to you and Mr. Earl too. I have, I have a conflict of interest with my vote and I had rather, I, I date Ty, who farms the land and it's a big conflict of interest for me, I think, to cast my vote. I don't want anybody thinking that I'm voting one way or the, I mean, I just, I feel in my heart, I have prayed hard about this, I'm gonna be honest with everybody, I've prayed hard about this and I feel like that it's, it's a, it's a conflict of interest for me to cast my vote. Christine and I had talked about one time with a, with a vote can- Christine and I had talked about one time with a, with a vote can, you know, pertaining to Leroy, that she was in. And I think that it's in my best interest not to cast my vote.
Alright, I'm gonna make the recommendation to table it till we got a full board here to vote on. We'll vote on it at the next meeting, whichever way it goes. Do I?
It's still gonna come down to a tie if Nikki's not gonna vote.
No, it won't. If she abstains from voting and y'all two vote one way and Layden votes another way.
Mr. Ty.
Mr. Ty.
I can't, I got to break the tie.
You can break the tie.
Oh, it's two and two.
How, how are you gonna break the tie?
If she abstains, you've got two against one. There ain't no, there's no.
They're calling you chairman. You still can vote.
I know I can vote.
Is that right, attorney? I have to go back and look at my calendar. Let me ask you this. Are you, are you elected by a district?
Yes.
Typically, you would have a right to vote if you're elected by a district at large. It all goes back kind of how your local act establishes it's voted. And I have not really re, ever researched that. The operation never has come up. He couldn't, he couldn't risk a tie if he couldn't vote.
I've been chairman of, uh, of local, born on board, board of.
If you're an at-large chairman like Early Ken, Early Ken is structured in a way where the chairman votes only in case of a tie because he's at large. In this case, if you are, if you are just elected as chairman based upon your being on the board, then typically I would say that the chairman has a right to vote, make a motion, second motion. Because without that, all he, he's just aggregated his representation of his district. He can't do that. So he can, you know, subject to a local, part of your local act saying otherwise, I would say he probably can vote.
Uh, uh, my understanding is if he rung for chairman, if he, if he had to rung for that position, then it would be like you say, by him being an elected official in one district.
That's correct.
He just, he just elected official in that district. And he is appointed by the board member just to do board business. I've done it for nine years. The only thing, we did the same thing. You just kind of commission on board that case.
Well, what I'm hearing is you got potential of two, four, two against one abstaining. You, you, basically, there's no action.
It's an emotional tie.
That's right. I mean, there's no action. I'd say it can't be brought back up, but it's no action at that point in time, if that's the way it works.
Well, Layden being in his, he's absent. I'd like for it to be on the record which way everybody voted. Can we table it? I'm asking the board.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Alright, I need, I want, I want that in a motion. I, you'll make a motion to table it.
Sure, yes.
There's a second.
I, I don't understand why we're tabling it. That, that, that's what I don't understand. Why are we keep tabling it?
Because I'm voting against it. I just wouldn't tell you.
And it's gonna be two and two at the end of the day and she gonna sustain. So next month, next year, next, whatever, it's still gonna be the same. Well, not next year, but I'm just saying, you, you know, why are we tabling it? Are we gonna, and we gonna come up to the same, same as that answer next month, we gonna come up with the same thing?
He might, if he comes back here and he makes a motion to revisit it, we're gonna have to revisit it if there's enough votes to revisit it.
If she gonna stand her vote, it's gonna be two on two in motion die. That's right.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I just don't get why are we tabling it? And it, next month, it's gonna be the same thing.
No, we know the irrigation system is a liability. The longer we put it off, the more chance we gonna have we get in trouble with this thing.
That, that, that's gonna be a, now, that may be a, there needs to be a different motion as to what you do if you're not gonna close it to stop the irrigation system.
Stop the irrigation system. The gates need to be removed.
You know, it's a different issue, uh, than the closure. You're not gonna close it or abandon it and close it, then you got to address the gates and the irrigation.
Absolutely.
That's the only way going forward. I think you've, you've got to consider the liability issues there.
Alright, is it gonna be tabled or what?
I'll just drop the whole thing and end it right now.
Well, it can't be dropped.
Why can't it be dropped?
You gonna drop it and then it don't get revisited again. Wh- wh- where you gonna be with the irrigation?
We're gonna, we're gonna shorten the irrigation. It's not gonna run across the road and we're gonna remove the gates. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to go that route.
I have the county attorney's letter saying it cannot be done no more.
I mean, like you say, is this been revisited a third time? We might as well kill it now. Ain't no need for dr, keep dragging it along.
It looked like to me with all the signature Mr. Cox had on that paper, the people who voted for Mr. Freeman has spoke about that. He should honor the voters' request, the people who signed that paper. But it, it looks like he has his agenda too, so.
Uh, I, I ain't got, I stand to gain nothing out of this whatsoever. The man brought a, a request to close the road. It ain't gonna, it ain't gonna help me one way or another.
Then, then just dissolve it.
That's what we're asking. Let's just dissolve it.
Let's just get it over with.
Well, make, make your motion. What you gonna do?
I'm making a motion that we drop this thing and stop it now.
I mean, really, what is gonna happen? Can, can we call Layden? I mean, is that a possibility?
Because there's no need to keep dragging it out. I mean.
The longer it's drug out, the bigger risk. The more we're gonna be putting this tax payer that we have to be ensuing by that irrigation system.
Uh, we got a motion on the table to abandon adopting the resolution for the road closure. Is there a second?
A second. We abandon, we not, we not gonna sign it.
Alright. So it just, it died for lack of a vote? Is that where we at with it?
Now, we need to address next meeting, whatever. Like you say, we need to get on board of this, making sure that the, the public is not being injured on this road.
Take the gates down.
We need to take the gates down and, yeah.
Alright. If that's where we at, we're, we're gonna move on to the next item. Alright, the new businesses, the Christmas bonuses. Last year, there was a, some of the EMTs, the emergency people got, uh, some money that regular employees didn't get for working during the COVID time. And they felt like they had not got their fair share, so we gave them an extra hundred dollars. And it was three fifty and we agreed to back it back down after that to two fifty. Y'all remember that?
Yes.
Alright. We're gonna set the Christmas bonuses at, at two fifty. What, what you got there?
Uh, I heard from two of the constitutional officers, they asking about them getting Christmas bonuses. And you know, last year we addressed this at Christmas time and it went all the way up to the ACCG attorneys that said if, if we give constitutional officers a bonus, that will be considered a supplement and they get to keep that for the remainder of their term. So that's up to y'all, but just.
Yes, the regular employees and not constitutional officers get the two hundred fifty. Alright, what was the, uh, part-time employees? That's staying the same. Is that agreeable?
I'll move the week after Thanksgiving because we have a table we do at Thanksgiving. I'll move it forward.
Alright.
So we're seeing that the, the, the constitutional officer is not gonna get a bonus that we're seeing?
That's right.
Their employees will, but they.
But constitutional officials won't be able to.
You have to continue supplementing them. It's what you're trying, what Doug's trying to say. So we're going back to the, to what it was before, the two fifty and the one twenty-five? Alright, need a motion to put it back. That's what we're gonna give. It's Christmas bonuses, two fifty and one twenty-five. That's, that's full time for two fifty and one twenty-five part-time. So a motion on that?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, motion carried. Alright, the next thing is the LAPCF money. That's going into the ARPA. It's in the ARPA account. We've got half of it, expecting another half of, it was a hundred thousand dollars and that's like using it the same way as we did the COVID money to try to balance out everything with expenses and stuff like that right there. Am I saying that right?
It just needs to be put in the, it needs to be put in the ARPA so that it can be audited and all of the ARPA money.
We don't need to make a motion. It's just, that's. It's the information. Alright, intergovernmental fuel agreement. That's with the hospital. Uh, they wanna buy fuel from the fuel station. We need to, we need a motion to, let me, uh, sign this agreement.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, motion's carried. Is there anything else we need to go over?
Hospital board appointment.
Oh, yeah, that's right. The, uh, y'all read the letter?
No, I got it late.
So y'all, y'all had read? Jerry Torbert has been on the board and he's been a faithful member, but, and this is coming from the hospital. The, uh, he ain't been able to attend for health reasons. And according to the law, the guidelines, you, uh, you need to be in attendance. And he's missed like, uh, I think four or five meetings in a row.
He just aren't able to do it.
But, uh, anyway, they made a recommendation since I was already on the board and I ain't gonna be serving as county representative, that me be appointed in that position. Is that agreeable?
I'm fine with that. No problem with that.
You'll make a motion?
I'll make the motion for you to.
You, alright, second. And y'all in favor? Alright, alright. Motion's carried. Is there anything else we need to go over? Any more questions for the county attorney? On anything? Uh, if not, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Alright, we adjourn.